Meeting to order. I think it's going to be a very short meeting, but we will see. It's the first item of business is the approval of the minutes of September 12. No. Yeah, approval of minutes of November 30th, sorry. I was looking at the minutes of September 12. Have a motion? You're the only one that can do that. I can't do it.
All right. Can I do it even if I wasn't there?
I think so.
So move.
And I'll second. The vote is unanimous.
Can I just ask a question? So these are from 2018. Does this?
Oh.
That was the last meeting?
Yes.
We've had meetings. I've discussed issues with Alan Taylor and Mr. Trefry, but we haven't had a full board.
Right.
Okay.
We lost our committee.
Just making sure. Since I'm new, I try to get my bearings here.
Black will never see that again in your time on the board. Okay, so let's see. Yes, I'm looking for my agenda. It seems to have everything but the agenda with me. So what do we have next on the agenda?
We have the 2019-20 audit plan as well as the 2020-21 audit plan and just the status of current projects. What I'm going to do is just briefly go through the 2021 audit plan. And just I'll remark on any changes from the 1920 that we're making in 2021, if that's okay with everyone. In the last two years, as far as the office goes, I have been the manager of the Office of Internal Audit. We've slowly rebuilt our team. I currently have three auditors underneath me as well as my secretary. Justin has about 12 years' experience. Tom, he's been in the office for two years and we were blessed this spring. Robin Fumara came from CTEC and is now part of our team as well. So you'll notice in terms of audit days, there's a big leap from 2019-20 to 2021. And this year, we're going to do a lot of cross-training and hopefully some of my newer team members will be able to receive some classes, whether it be via the internet or depending on how COVID goes, maybe in person. If you have the plan in front of you on page five, we have activities that we conduct on a yearly basis. A large portion of our time goes to federal and state single audit reviews. Last week, we sent out our transmittal of instructions for the 2019-20 year that included our agreed-upon procedures packages, which the external auditors look at. The pupil data as well as the expenditure data of the districts. We are currently working on the 2018-19 single audits that we received. We gave funding between us and the Office of Early Childhood. We gave funding to approximately 523 entities. We are responsible, my office is responsible for tracking the audit reports and following up on education-specific or early childhood-specific findings, as well as we have oversight on regions, rests, and charter schools. So if there's any financial findings, we have to follow up on those as well. The thresholds between last year and this year have remained the same. Federal 750. The state is 300,000. We followed up on approximately 82 entities in terms of sending out letters. Because of COVID, we streamlined our process and we send our letters out via email and we've received responses via email as well. It's worked out quite well for us. So that's our federal and state single audit. The next page covers CTEC. The plan, the changes from 2019-20 to 2021. We looked at two schools in 1920. Our plan for this year, we're going to do four compliance reviews. The chart is attachment two at the back. And as well as we weren't able to perform our performance audit on CTEC because of COVID. We had plans on starting that in March, April, and May, and with COVID hitting, we had to streamline our audit processes. So we're going to pick up that for this year. In addition, I've been working with Mara Kajjar. She's the Assistant Chief of Fiscal and Administrative Services on various issues, especially fiscal issues amongst the CTEC system. I've been working hard with her to implement changes or help them implement changes. The next section is the Education Cost Sharing Grant. We look at the Education Cost Sharing Grant every year. It's a very large calculation. And it's actually a calculation, or it has been in the last couple of years. So we look at various data elements. For the calculation, we should be getting that any day now through the 2021 year. So we'll be looking at that shortly and we will respond to the Bureau of Fiscal Services by October. Charter and magnet schools. Last year, we did 12 charter school renewals. Because of COVID, the schedule was changed for this year. So we don't have any renewals in our plan, but we will assist the turnaround office with charter management organization contracts reviewing them. We will also work with the magnet school office on various issues as they come about. The forms review process. I have about 160 forms in my shop right now. We will be reviewing them shortly, getting, again, getting a memo out to the Bureau of Fiscal Services. And again, all these areas, we do on an annual basis. We've been working with the auditors of public account on various issues. And we'll continue to do that throughout this year. In 1920, we started a Title I fiscal review at CTEC. Because of COVID, we had to eliminate that review. We plan on picking that up for this year if all goes well. We also did some 21% first century fiscal reviews, and we do plan on doing some this year. But again, based on COVID, we'll determine our course of action. We may do desk reviews, have the entities send in fiscal documentation for our review instead of going out on site. Other audit activities in 2019-20, we had quite a few special projects come our way. They came from the Commissioner's Office, the Board, whistleblowers, other departments within the agency. I'm already getting some review requests for this year. So we will process them as they come in. And if we have time this year, we're going to go out to the CPA firms that do state and federal single audits as well as our agreed-upon procedures and check their work papers. We went out to one firm this past summer and we looked at their work papers for the education finance data system. And that's our plan for 2021. Are there any questions? I see Kathy smiling. And I'm sorry, I'm tilting. I'm working with two screens, so I apologize. I'm tilting.
Nora, I didn't pick up the right piece of paper for my desk and bring it into my wife's computer because I need to use hers. But my recollection is that you had planned on doing two district audits, I think, and weren't able to. So now you're going to do four this year. Is that right?
We did two. We actually did two. We did Ellis Tech in 1920, and we did JM Wright in 1920. JM Wright was more extensive. Our work was more extensive than we thought. And because of COVID, we were just in and out of the school. We were in and out of school for about a three-month period. We're working on issuing that report. It should go out this week or next week. So we did look at two schools last year. Our plan, because of the charter school renewals, we're not going to be doing any. That took up a big chunk of time last year. We'll have more time to focus on CTEC. So that's why we're going to do four. And the four are Ello Grasso, Henry Abbott in Danbury, Lionel in Middleton, and Keener in Waterbury. We're also going to follow up on JM Wright and Ellis Tech. There's been a lot of changes in the business office at both schools due to retirements and unfortunately, one of the staff members at one of the schools passed away due to COVID. So we're going to follow up to make sure that the fiscal side is running properly. And again, I've been working closely with Mara Kajjar and Mr. Wimby. I'm making sure that happens.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess not. What's next, Kathy?
My next, Nora? Because I don't know what I do with my agenda either.
Just a bunch of updates.
Nora, was there any things that came up last year that we need to discuss as a committee? Obviously, we just said CTEC, but in all of the audits, all the work that you've done.
Actually, my office is currently working on the audit report for 1920. So I'll be issuing that again, hopefully by the end of September, and I'll make sure everyone gets happy. But that'll kind of summarize all our projects, including our special projects.
Maybe that's the time to go over it.
So at our next audit committee meeting, we can discuss the report that we send out, my office sends out, if that's okay with everyone.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Somebody ought to maybe for Martha's sake introduce Levi in what he does.
My name is Levi Gillespie. I'm the Equal Improvement Opportunity Director for the State Department of Education, which also includes CTEC. And then I'm also on loan to the OEC Office of Early Childhood.
Great, thank you.
Are you actually on loan to them or do you just occasionally help them out?
I'm more than actually on loan. I am their equal, I am their affirmative action office. So we also buy the plan for OEC. We're involved in their day-to-day operations in terms of, you know, hiring and affirmative action requirements. So I guess it's more than being on loan. We actually, you know, provide the entire service for OEC.
Thank you.
All right. Are we ready?
Yes. Can everybody who isn't speaking mute? I'm getting a lot of feedback. Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Sure. So I thought instead of giving my normal budget update, we are in good shape for this year. I will just say we anticipate being able to expend all of our funds. We have one issue in the Education Cost Sharing Grant where the legislature underfunded it by $2 million, but I have enough of anticipated lapse in the charter school account from the Stanford Academy closing that I can cover the shortfall that we'll see in ECS. So I thought it might be helpful, and the Commissioner had asked me, Alan, if I could give a brief overview of the funding sources that have been made available for districts for, under the CARES Act. So if that's okay with you, then I will go ahead and do that. So there's there are three main sources of funding for school districts that are available under the CARES Act. First and foremost is the, what we call the ESER grant, because it saves us from saying elementary and secondary school education emergency, really. A count over and over. Connecticut received $111 million under ESER. $99 million of that is going out directly to the local school districts, charter schools, and that includes charter schools. Those funds are actually being dispersed based upon their Title I allocations for fiscal 1920. So that was relatively simple for us to get those funds out on the street. The application actually is available. 160 districts have been approved and have begun to draw down their money, and we have a handful of districts that are still in the final stages of completing their application and making some revisions to it. Under that $111 million, the state reserved $11 million for its states set aside. Now, that $11 million will be used for meeting the Commissioner's priorities, which were connectivity and devices, curriculum content being available online, high-quality content, I should say, social, emotional learning, and then health and safety. So currently, we are, we have a couple of RFPs on the street. One of them is to purchase a online management system for curriculum content for districts to be able to access. The second one is for a social-emotional screening tool for districts to use in order to better be able to determine where their students are, particularly in light of what's gone on, the trauma they may have experienced for COVID. We are also committing $5 million of that money towards connectivity. And when I say connectivity, it's the purchase of hotspots or the purchase of vouchers for broadband connection. And that money is actually being matched with funding under GEAR. And GEAR is the second major source of funding that is available for local school districts. GEAR is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. It's managed by the Governor's Office. We had to do an application in order to get the funding. They got 29, I'm sorry, $28 million in total, and the department actually was fortunate to have them set aside 15 million of that for us. That $15 million is being used for a combination of purchasing devices for students and also purchasing hotspots or vouchers for broadband. So I think Ajit talked a little bit during the board meeting about that process. It's being coordinated centrally through the department. And we are purchasing, we're in the midst of purchasing, almost 70,000 devices. So the devices are either Chromebooks or laptops. Districts were required to submit an order form essentially to us, letting us know what their gap was in terms of being able to offer devices to their students. The same thing with connectivity. So we asked them to identify for us the numbers of families that they anticipated were accessing the curriculum because of their lack of connectivity. The third major piece of funding actually is general, it's general federal funding that came to the state through the Office of Policy and Management. So Connecticut received over $1 billion in coronavirus relief funding. And that funding is being used for a wide variety of things. You know, supporting state agencies' costs associated with COVID, supporting testing statewide. There's a subsidy for municipalities, for nursing homes. There's a broad range of activities that those funds can be used for. So the governor had wanted to commit some funding to local school districts to assist with reopening. And based on that, we did, the department ran two surveys. The first one was due to us July 17. And that survey was to identify what the costs were that the district anticipated under reopening in a full-in model. So if everybody came back to school, you know, what costs were they anticipating for the remainder of the school year that were in excess of what they currently had budgeted locally? So we were just looking for the delta. Not long after that, the governor and the Commissioner announced that districts would be given flexibility to also open in a hybrid fashion. So the Secretary of OPM asked us to re-survey districts as to what costs they would anticipate associated with a hybrid model versus if they were going to open under a full reopening. So that was due to us on August 5. We received, the categories that we actually asked for information around were costs associated with academic support, both personnel-related and non-personnel-related, student supports, both personnel-related and non-personnel-related, cleaning, PPE, health and safety, again, personnel-related and non-personnel-related, transportation, personnel-related and non-personnel-related, and technology, personnel-related and non-personnel-related. So that generated between the two surveys, an estimated additional cost of about $400 million that districts were anticipating seeing to cover the costs of reopening school, whether it be hybrid or remote for this, I'm sorry, hybrid or in-school for this upcoming school year. I'm not shocked, to give you some context, because especially since Martha's new, we spend annually about $9.5 billion on education. So I was anticipating somewhere between, you know, 2.5% increase on the low end to up to 10%, depending on the district and how prepared they were in order to accommodate the kind of changes they were going to need. So the $400 million was kind of dead in the middle. Based on that, we worked with the Office of Policy and Management to come up with which areas were going to be a priority for the governor to fund. So of those, we funded academic personnel support and student personnel support for all of our districts that had at least 40% free and reduced-price lunch. And their student count consisted of at least 40% of their students being eligible for free and reduced-price lunch. Under the academic support, we actually provided our 10 opportunity districts, which are lowest, 10 lowest-performing districts with 100% of the estimated costs that they provided us related to academic support personnel. And the balance of the funding went to all of the remaining districts that exceeded that 40% threshold. The other thing that was funded was cleaning and PPE, both non-personnel-related and personnel-related. The governor funded 100% of people's estimated costs for non-personnel-related cleaning and PPE. That was something he felt very strongly about. He was hearing not only from the districts, but from the teachers' unions and parents, and let's just say I'm glad I was his email box. So he made the commitment to covering 100% of non-personnel-related PPE, and then we have a small amount, about $1.5 million, that was committed towards personnel-related cleaning costs. So in other words, janitorial staff overtime, that type of thing. We did not fund technology through this funding mechanism. Technology, so part of that $400 million in requested funds, a big portion of it was for technology. We took technology out of there because the governor was already committing to purchasing the devices and the connectivity through different sources of funding. So we didn't just ignore it, which I think people sense that somehow, oh, they didn't give us any money for technology. The final piece that we provided funding for was related to transportation. So if you needed to, and that was based upon, everybody was eligible, first of all, learning backup. Everyone, all districts were eligible for cleaning, the cleaning PPE money and the transportation money. There was no equity measure there. And it was based in those cases on the size of the district. And so, and those funds could be used, just to give you an idea, if they needed additional bus routes to reduce density, if we're cleaning the buses for bus monitors, those were all eligible costs under this. The thing that's important to understand, because I know there has been an enormous amount of, well, upset, outraged, a variety of things over this particular pot of funding. Who knew you hand out $130 million and people be so upset? No, only teasing. But two things to keep in mind. These funds are only available to us through December 30. Okay, because the coronavirus relief funds were the period that they are under the federal legislation, that they're available from March 1 of 2020 through December 30 of 2020. So it was never anticipated that these funds would cover the costs for a full year for anything. It was, we were going to help subsidize the costs that districts would see during the first three months of school. Two, it's also based on a reimbursement basis. So just because your allocation So just because your allocation, you know, you asked for, I'm, I'll just say, you know, title in Cheshire, I'm Cheshire and I asked for, you know, a million dollars in PPE and cleaning. I actually have to document that before we receive those funds. So this is all done on a reimbursement basis. You know, we're not just handing out the money and saying, go ahead. And then they end up using it for whatever it is that they think that they need. Second, we have committed to re-looking in October at where districts are. So, you know, part of the anxiety, I think, overall this is, and it wasn't that we didn't understand, is that people were providing us with estimates. And they were providing us with estimates without really knowing what being in school was going to look like. You know, so it isn't that we didn't think that some people were probably, had asked for way too much and others had asked for way too little. It was, it was the understanding that we were going to have to revisit this. And so we will be revisiting this in October. And at that point, we will have all of the districts' applications and we will be able to take a closer look at what their actual spending needs are. And then funds will be available to be moved around or reallocated. And that has been communicated to all of the districts, actually on multiple occasions. It didn't make them any happier, but it has been communicated to all of them. And the final two things, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Kathy, you said reallocated, you mean reallocated between other, to other districts potentially?
Yes, so it can be both. It could be reallocated within the categories that they asked for funding for, or it could be reallocated to other districts. Because I have to be honest, a few of our large, a few of the districts that received the largest amounts of money, they don't anticipate that they're going to expend, that was a year-long estimate. So I'm not anticipating that they're going to expend those funds in the first three months. You know, if by some miracle, if the federal government can manage to pass another aid bill, education is one of the, you know, areas that is up for consideration. And it would be our hope then to continue to subsidize the districts for the balance of the school year. But these funds, as I said, are only, unlike the ESER funds, which are available for two years, these are only available through December thirtieth.
So if they don't get used in that three months, you know, and you would do, you have to send them back to the federal government or?
So we would, but, yeah, so Bob, we would, but, which is why we're going to be watching this very closely and doing a relook in October at where schools are. You know, if at that point, people have gone out because of, you know, a larger outbreak and stuff, that is going to shift the needs that the districts have. And so we, it's our goal to be flexible through this and help to address the needs as the districts see them. And, you know, we just, we didn't anticipate that they could anticipate in July and August what it was going to look like. We just were in need of giving the governor some information about, you know, what is it that districts are facing? And that was his question to us.
Do the feds take the money back if you, if they're not expended in the three months?
They would. Yes.
So you're being on top, is a good thing.
Yes.
A lot of work.
Yeah, I'm trying to make a whole other bunch of people mad in six weeks' time, they'll all be yelling for a jury. Kind of a sense of humor, right?
Do you, Kathy, are there districts who are coming in that are saying, we've spent way more than we thought? Try to get open?
Yes, there are absolutely districts that are. And for now, we are asking them to take advantage of the funds they received under ESER to cover those costs. And because depending upon what happens, they can always shift between, you know, which federal source of funding that they use. We would allow them to readjust their budgets. So if they ended up with additional coronavirus relief funds, we would allow them to modify their ESER budget in order to then redistribute those funds for a different purpose. So we are trying to be as flexible as possible within the constraints of the federal guidance. There was just two other tiny pots of money. They, the governor reserved a couple of million dollars towards social emotional learning. Charlene and her staff are working on what that looks like in terms of getting those funds out on, out to districts. And then, just so that you're aware, but he also had committed four point five million dollars to the purchase of statewide public hotspots. That project's being coordinated by the Connecticut Commission for Education Technology, Doug Casey's group. They're a, they're an arm of the Department of Administrative Services. So that is kind of an overview of the funding that is available, which is, you know, close to two hundred and, oh, God, I can't add this morning. Just under three hundred million dollars is federal funds are being committed towards what the districts anticipate needing. And then I'll stop and I'm happy to answer any questions. All right, this is my easiest crowd.
Anybody have any questions? Martha?
Uh, no, I'm just observing. Connecting, does the federal money that you just discussed come with any, going back to the internal auditing, auditing requirements that have to get added in to your, to the plans?
Yes, and, and we just issued our guidance for the two thousand nineteen-twenty single audits. We did put a piece in there for the COVID-related grants. We've given LEAs links of various federal documents that talk about compliance and what is, and what is not eligible to be reported for those grants. And we will do so next year when we issue the two thousand twenty-one guidance.
Got it, so you're behind.
Yes.
And we have program managers assigned to all of these funds who will monitor the districts and actually approve what they come in with, for the coronavirus relief funds. The Office of Policy and Management has committed a couple of staff to work with us to make sure that we're within the guidelines under that particular pot of money. And we have now converted all of our grant applications to an online electronic system. Yay. So we will now seamlessly, this is the first year, we will seamlessly, people will be able to go all the ways from application to dispersment and then reporting for the purposes of both the auditors and federal reporting needs and state reporting needs, all in one system. So I am very relieved and happy to have that project completed.
Is that publicly accessible, so it solves any FOIA issues as well?
Yes, yes, it's available on the department's website. And the nicest thing, as I said, is for once, it's all in one place. It used to be that applications were in this area and the prepayment grants took care of the cash flow management. It's all together now. It's going to make all of our lives much easier.
Yes, we will be streamlining our process for audit instructions next year.
We're getting there.
Yes.
Kathy, what's been the biggest challenge in, in the distribution and allocation of all these funds?
That's a good question. You know, with ESER, it actually was much more straightforward for us because that was done as, we were, we're used to dispersing federal education funds. And they came along with a formula and, you know, that, that's, we have entire structures set up to do that. The coronavirus relief funds have definitely been more of a challenge because of, it's, there are different, there are some different rules around utilization. There are some different rules about, you know, and like just the sheer fact that it's on a reimbursement basis is different than how we typically give out money. And then the process, which, as I said, was, I don't, actually, I don't think I said it was of surveying the districts, was actually the same process that was used on the municipal side because that is how OPM does things. So I think it just led to a great deal of consternation amongst our superintendents and in feeling like this wasn't something they were used to, you know, and it, and it wasn't something we were used to. But, you know, I think that in the end, we've already been able to assist. I've had eight school districts who have come in and we've worked with them because they just completely misunderstood the survey. I mean, you know, they had things in the wrong categories, they didn't, you know, we had one district who literally submitted zeros in every. I'm like, that's not possible. But we've worked with them and we've, you know, we have a good working relationship with Secretary McCaw and her staff. And so in all of those cases, we've been able to fully fund their PPE costs. And in, for Putnam, which is one of our alliance districts, I'm sorry, not our, which exceeded the forty percent threshold, we were even able to get them some academic staff support money. So we've been trying to be responsive and helpful. You know, the people who are complaining about it, frankly, and the newspaper would do better to pick up the phone and call and, you know, let us know what their concern, you know, if, if you tell us, we can do something about it.
But that's not as much fun.
No, no.
Thanks, Kathy.
Yeah, one thing, just as New Haven's, just so that you're aware, New Haven's allotment of funds was just reduced. It was reduced based on the fact that they formally did continue their position of not coming in for ten weeks. So we had allocated quite a bit of transportation funding to New Haven and PPE resources. The fact that this has to be expanded by December thirtieth, we did per the buildings. That has been communicated to them. It was, so they are, they can absolutely purchase storable items with these funds. Again, I think that, you know, the thinking is that we have districts who, you know, as Martha mentioned, many of them feel that they've already expended significantly more than we've made available. And they are in school physically with their students. And so I think addressing their need right now made more sense. So, from New Haven, I've been waiting, but I haven't gotten any. It's been suspiciously quiet.
So what's the plan to help districts bridge to the second half of the school year or whatever, you know, the more than half, half after the new year? Because it's going to be a wrap, it's not like, you know, COVID is going to go away on January first.
No, no, you're not, on the financial side, a couple of things. The General Assembly will be, they're coming in for a special session supposedly this month, but they will be back in session for their full legis, this is the long session where they start in January. So that is going to be an opportunity for us to, you know, along with OPM, work on making them aware of what the needs are that haven't been covered for districts by the federal funding that is available. You know, and we also are hopeful that the federal government will decide to commit to some additional funding. But, you know, for us, the, probably the number one mechanism will be working with the General Assembly as they come in. And we've been doing, the commissioner, I'm I'm sure has told you guys, we've been doing regular meetings with the Education Committee and the Appropriations Committee, you know, talking about what districts are seeing and what the needs are. So that's what I anticipate happening at this point.
Thank you.
Kathy, the, yeah, just one other thing, you know, there's, and I, I must admit, I don't try to totally understand it, but the, this money for private schools and non-public school, is that also flowing through your office or how does that work? Or are we doing it at all?
So, that's a good question, Bob. Under federal law, there is a provision in the education grants and all the title grants for a set aside for private schools to provide services to students, needy students who attend private schools. And Secretary DeVos, when she came out with her guidance a couple of months ago about how we would calculate how much money needed, the district needed to set aside, took a much broader approach. And so she pretty much said that the funds should be available for all students enrolled in the private school and for all private schools, as long as, you know, they weren't private in the sense of that they were profit-making. And so the impact of that was substantial. You know, we had districts that would have to set aside more money for the private schools than they were going to be able to use for their own schools. So we moved forward with the approval of the governor and the Attorney General's office with guidance suggesting that districts escrow that money. And in the meantime, move forward under the federal Title I guidelines, which was what we felt that the CARES Act required. And Justice was probably tired of seeing me, frankly. So, of course, not long after that, Secretary DeVos got an interim rule, which essentially becomes law. And it kind of split the baby. And so it said that if you don't reserve money for all of the kids who are in the private schools, then, and you use the Title I methodology, then you have to restrict how you use that money yourself to only your Title I schools, which, that wasn't what the CARES Act ever intended. And it was very clear, the language in the, I'm not a lawyer, but it was very clear, you know, that they intended it to be for all the students in the district, not just the ones that were in Title I eligible schools. But we went back out, we modified the application, we let everybody know that they could, they had this choice. Well, in the last two weeks, there have been several court cases that have been decided, and it's definitely Alan's role. One of them being a federal court, which completely overturned the interim rule and overturned it for the whole country, unlike some of the initial decisions which were related to the area that they were in. So we are now in the midst of sending out revised guidance for the fourth time to districts that tells them that they can follow the, that they, nevermind, they can, they should follow the Title I allocation methodology, which would minimize the amount they had to set aside for private schools. And they are eligible to use all of those funds for their, for every student in the district, not just restricted to Title I in their district. My concern is, is that half of our district My concern is, is that half of our districts chose the broader interpretation. And I'm sure they did that because they were concerned about restricting the funds only to their Title I schools. You know, for some districts, they, they may have one building that is Title I eligible and, and receiving funding. So, and, you know, you could have twelve school buildings. Uh, so it made sense for them when they figured out the dollars for them to do that. So I don't know how we're gonna sort out, how does, how do the private schools, to the extent that we've already purchased things on their behalf or provided, certain, the districts have provided services on their behalf, how do we then recoup that? Because now it's no longer an eligible use for these funds. So it's a, I will let you know as, as we move forward. But this week, we are sending out a letter to them to let them know that, again, this is now changed. And, you know, hopefully they aren't gonna all wanna pull out their hair and
And it's only it's, it's only at the district court, so of course there are one or more courts of appeal yet to be heard from.
Yeah.
Could all change again.
That is very true.
Martha, does the Title I thing make sense? Do you understand that?
It does, when I Googled it on my other screen. So yes, I follow.
You know, the other acronym they threw around, which took me a long time to get is LEAs?
Learning, yeah.
That's a local, a local school district, basically.
Yes.
Right, local education agencies.
Local education. It was really helpful when Kathy clarified that you can have one building in a, in a district be Title I and not the rest. Um, so that kind of, you can understand that spreads the, um, risk or, you know, situation.
Any, anything else? Anybody? Levi, do you have any, anything for this meeting or?
Well, I, I can do a, a quick update. So, um, as everyone knows, um, the State Department of Education and also Texas required to, uh, submit an affirmative action plan, uh, to the Connecticut Commission or the Connecticut, Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities annually. And our, um, our twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen plan was approved. Our twenty nineteen, twenty plan was, uh, submitted, um, in, uh, in August. Uh, we are due for our, our review in October. And I'll have more information in October after, uh, we receive our review.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything else? Kathy, Nora, anybody? Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We are, are adjourned. See you all, I hope, in person.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.